At 6:30, I'll call to order the meeting of the City Council of Cherry Hills Village. It's Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. And we'll start with a roll call.
Counselor Sepavie?
Here.
Counselor Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Gallagher is absent. Counselor Sheldon is absent. Counselor Blum?
Yeah.
If you could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice pro.
Okay, we have audience participation period. First on the sign up list is Tori Levitin. Tori, you're no worries. Counselor Sheldon is present.
Present.
And accounted for. Mr. Levitin, you have the floor.
Thank you. Greetings fellow mayor, city council, neighbors, guests, and staff. I sincerely appreciate your continued hard work. I am Tori J. Levitin, resident at 3901 East Quincy Avenue. The property has many other names. I call it Muskrat Village Falls. On some old maps, it's called Smith's Gardens. I currently serve as a commissioner with Parks, Trails, and Recreation and would find honor by representing Cherry Hills Village, District 2, for the next city council cycle. It is imperative that I run unopposed. Being asked to represent the community is quite different than seeking the position. If you know of other interested parties, kindly persuade them to support my candidacy instead, as I will gladly reciprocate when the time comes for them. I am prepared for the candidate's forum next week on Tuesday, August 9th at 4:00 PM. With everyone's endorsements, we can progress forward to a bright future for this community. If elected to city council, I vow to proudly represent the village's constituents, our shared values, interests, and common goals. I love this place. If granted the opportunity to serve, I will work my hardest to maintain and promote Cherry Hills Village as the finest home in all of the lands. Thank you again for all your hard work. I will continue to stand for and represent our city's success regardless of whatever changes may come in the future. I sincerely appreciate all your time in a world so often threatened by darkness and hatred. May our community shine as a beacon of collaborative civilization, sustainability, and conservation. Blessed be our home. Thank you.
Next on the sign up is Trey Rogers. Mr. Rogers, you can have the podium.
I'm good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Trey Rogers. I'm an attorney and I represent the petitioners committee that has brought you the charter amendment that you'll be considering in item 9B this evening. Your task is to set a title. I have a few comments on that, but before getting into it, I wanted to tell you that working with Laura Gillespie has been a pleasure and working with Kathy, your city attorney, has also been a pleasure. They've both been professional and excellent to work with and are real credit to the city. With regard to the title, Kathy and I have worked through a number of issues and I think we've gotten to the point where the draft resolution she has presented to you tonight is very good. There are two points on which the petitioners committee would change the title. And let me explain to you what those are and why. So I'm referring here to resolution number 17, version B, which I think folks have.
He's on the dice.
Okay. So as I think you are aware, the charter amendment would amend Charter Section 3.9. It would require a vote of the people before the city sales, vacates, or conveys an interest in a trail or an interest in open space. So the title generally conveys that. The two changes we would like to see are, on the third line, we would eliminate the parenthetical. So we would delete "to include all property held for the use and enjoyment of the public but excluding 90 mead lane, public streets, and right-of-ways." The reason we request that change is that the statute on setting title requires a brief summary of the major elements of the measure. It doesn't require every detail. It requires something that's short and simple and communicates to the voters the big issue in the measure. So while it is accurate that the measure is written to define open space to include property held for the use and enjoyment of the public, it is true that it excludes 90 mead lane and it excludes public streets and right-of-ways, rights-of-way. That's a detail. It's merely in the definition of open space. People generally know what open space means. It is just not necessary to add these additional, you know, 20-some words and a couple of lines into the title. Second, we ask you to delete the words after the parenthetical, specifically "in addition to the current requirement for the voter approval to pledge or convey city parks." While that is an accurate statement of the Charter section as it reads today, that has nothing at all to do with what this measure does. And again, the statutes that give you the direction on how to set a title tell you that you are to summarize the measure, not existing law, or not what the effects of the measure would be. So we think it is extraneous to say "in addition to the current requirement for voter approval as it applies to parks." Now, I think what your city attorney will tell you is, well, yeah, but there might be confusion among members of the public or among voters between what park space is and open space is. Frankly, I don't share that opinion. I think people know what parks are. I think they know what open space is. And I think it confuses the issue when we try to communicate that there's already protection from sale, sorry, in the current charter amendment. So that's it. We ask for those two changes and I appreciate your time. Happy to answer any questions now or when the item comes up on the agenda a little later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Appreciate it. Anybody else wish to speak in this portion of the meeting? If not, and I've taken no reports from commissions or boards, I'll move on to agenda item six, consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second? Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to new business, number 9A, discussion of ballot language for potential remote sellers' sales tax ballot issue.
Good evening, council. I'm excited to introduce this topic to you tonight. In some ways, this could be viewed as a continuation of the very last council meeting where Mr. Blakely gave us his summary report of his contract that he performed during the education portion of this whole process. This really represents tonight sort of the net sum total of a lot of those efforts. And so I'll kick it over to Kyle to talk about sort of the background of some of this information. Kathy can talk a little bit about some of the legalities of it. And then I think Counselor Wheel will actually wrap us up tonight and allow for any discussion. It is not scheduled to be voted on tonight. This is really just the introduction of the item. So, right? Yep. So there's so many ballot measures. I want to make sure I'm getting it correct. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Blakely to keep us moving forward.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thanks. Nice to be here again. Each time I come present to you, my presentation gets a little shorter, so I'm sure you're appreciative of that, too. So I just have a couple of slides I want to walk through before I hand it over to Kathy to talk more about the language. Again, just to kind of recap where we've been over the last several months, we started with the research of the three potential ballot issues, including this one, the remote sellers, Internet Sales Tax Code language, the construction materials use tax, and the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Fund redistribution. And from that, then, we, again, as I mentioned last time I was here, the research indicated that really this was the one issue that there appeared to be support for and to move forward. And so over the last few months since the research ended, we've conducted an education campaign. We talked to quite a few homeowners associations. We sent out a postcard. We've done articles in The Crier. There've been stories in The Villager. So I think we've done a good job of getting to at least a beginning part of the community. Obviously, people aren't engaged in thinking about political campaigns as much right now, but I feel like we did a good job of educating voters so that if they're talking about it in their neighborhood, there's probably one or two people that are familiar with it and can speak about it. And then hopefully, it'll just kind of build from there. So tonight, then, is to review and discuss the possible ballot language. Again, as Chris said, the final vote then being on August 16th. And then that's when things would kind of be taken over by a volunteer committee of citizens leading up to Election Day on November 8th. So that's kind of the background. Does anybody have any questions for me before Kathy jumps in? Okay, thank you.
All right. So council is well aware of the reason for this, but just for the listening public, you know, we had the Wayfair decision in 2018 by the Supreme Court that effectively said that, well, it invalidated the city's version of the physical presence rule that's in its sales tax code, to put a really fine point on it. And given the state of the law here in Colorado, any kind of change to a tax policy that directly may cause a net revenue gain to the city requires voter approval. So there's a couple ways you can do this. You can refer a question to the voters and then follow with an implementing ordinance if the question is approved. You can refer the ballot issue with proposed changes to the municipal code mentioned in there. Or you can refer an entire ordinance adopting changes to the municipal code that become effective if the measure passes. And we're recommending option A, referring a question, following up with an implementing ordinance to ensure that, well, there's two benefits to this. One, that we can reflect current Colorado law and practices. This is a fairly new, in the scheme of law and time, development. And there are still some things shaking out at the state level in terms of administration of the tax collection for remote sellers. And secondly, if you have an ordinance that's separate, you have a public opportunity to discuss it. So that's beneficial. So that's why we're recommending option A. And thank you, Laura. So the question, draft question language that has been proposed for consideration is on your screen. And I'll just read it for those listening. Shall the sales tax code of the city of Cherry Hills Village be amended as a voter-approved tax policy change to require persons engaged in business in the city, which may include persons making deliveries to city residents, including remote sellers, to collect tax? And further, shall any increase in revenues resulting from these changes to the code, regardless of amount, constitute a voter-approved revenue change for the city within the meaning of Article 10, Section 20 of the Colorado Constitution, also known as the Tabor provision? So that is draft language. It's not set in stone. It's subject to approval by you in the future or subject in time for meeting the county's deadlines for appearing on the ballot. And just want to note, this question, you may observe, doesn't create a new tax. Currently, there is tangible personal property being sold at retail is subject to the tax. Tangible personal property at retail will be subject to the tax if this is approved. Secondly, it will not increase the tax rate of 3.5% that exists in the city code currently. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I might jump in and use my prerogative this time. Instead of asking others to speak first, if I could speak first. I would suggest, I talked to our city attorney and wondered if we could, consistent with Tabor and everything else, begin this language with a phrase such as the following, without changing the existing 3.5% sales tax rate, comma, shall the sales tax, and then proceed on. And it occurred to us. And I thought Counselor Wheel and I discussed this, but I brought it up, and it seems more accurate because I think as we're discussing this issue with potential issue with residents, they all want to know what is it and does that change. So I suggest that. And is a change to this that maybe we can bring forward. And as we're discussing this and giving your thoughts, if you give us, Counselor Blum?
May it may. Very good point there. Kyle and I were sitting out there and a lady came up with that exact question. We were sitting outside, whether this would be a tax increase. Are we changing the sales tax or anything? And I think that, I don't know exactly how it's worded, but I think that clarifies the fact that we are not increasing taxes.
We're not increasing the rate.
Revenue, right, the rate. And I think that's important because based upon what I heard outside today, I think that's an important adjunct to this.
Counselor Sheldon?
Kathy, can you bring up the one or two slides previous where it talked about the three options in which to bring this? Yeah. So if we go with the, I don't have any, by the way, Mayor, I'm in favor of your add-on. I do have a question, though, about this. Did I hear you say that we would refer to the electors and then we would have an ordinance that would come in front of us for two readings that we would then discuss? I think I heard you say that. What is there to discuss once we take it to the voters and they were to, is it the fine detail that you'd be kind of hammering out in the ordinance?
A little bit of that. And also, there's model ordinances that would reflect joining the state collecting system that is actually getting some pushback right now that may be changing. A lot of cities have already, most self-collecting home rule jurisdictions have already adopted that, but there's some issues out there or some potential legal claims. And I just, I think it would be most prudent to see that we have the most current version. If the state works that out and CML works that out, then, you know, we'll be good to go. But I think that's, there's a modicum of uncertainty on that right now. So it would, and it sort of makes sense to bring it all together in one fell swoop.
So if you did option C and refer the ballot issue of the entire ordinance, you wouldn't have that opportunity to make any changes if there was something during that interim period that were to change?
Correct. It's a springing ordinance, and then you have to do more potential, just depends on what you put in there. But yes, you'll be frozen. A little bit more there.
It's also an opportunity for additional public comment.
Say again?
It's also an opportunity for additional public comment.
Yeah, and that's really what piqued my interest in asking the question. I mean, I appreciate that you want to open it up to public comment at that point, but the ballot measure will have then, in theory, assuming it passed, have passed. And so opening it up to public comment, I guess you're opening it up to discuss, again, the detail.
And not just comment, but increased understanding, right?
Okay. And I guess one question, if the state's collection system, is that what you were just describing, some of the home rules are going off, going away from that?
Going to that.
Oh, going to?
They pretty much need to, based on the Wayfair decision.
But there's a couple of jurisdictions that are the exception that are taking, exception to a couple of aspects of it.
Right.
So that just needs to play itself out.
Got it. Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
And building on that, too, I think that the issue that our attorney was referring to involves litigation involving Lakewood and Wayfair. So there are some open questions about exactly what it may, they may impact, they may affect what kind of language the ordinance.
What the recommendation, you know, Colorado has a very unique sales tax system and remote sellers from around the country struggle. And it tends to be a target. And so we want to be sure that, and I think CML and all the jurisdictions in the state want to be sure that, you know, everything is done in accordance with.
There's kind of, there is a dancer, there is negotiations between the retailers and the state about how this is going to, all this is going to come down and what's burdensome because that's what's important to the Supreme Court. You know, this is interstate commerce. What's unduly burdensome and all those kinds of details. And so the idea, I think, that our city attorney is saying is we need the flexibility to craft those ordinances to comply with the SUTs and the Supreme Court cases.
Correct.
Counselor Brown?
So my questions revolve around kind of that same issue. My concern, so first of all, how much time do we have between when, assuming the ballot issue would pass and we would have to adopt an ordinance?
It's not mandated. I think, you know, we would, there's no requirement that we would do it all at once. It may make sense to do it all at once, depending on how some of these other things evolve. But I would say, you know, you would probably go pretty quickly unless there's a really strong reason why we should hold our horses until there's some challenges. But I wish I had a crystal ball to say there'll be.
So I guess my question comes down to what the, what the risk is with a potential perception by the public that the ordinance that is adopted doesn't implement the decision or the ballot issue.
The voter's intent.
The voter's intent. That's my concern.
I understand.
Yes, it's like along those lines.
And I'm not saying we wouldn't implement this right away, or we wouldn't bifurcate the two things, or we might, our initial intention was to do it all at once and get it all working. But if you adopt the voter's intent and there's obstacles in the collection mechanism, you know, you may still have a little bit of a delay on that.
Right. Well, that's, and that's where I get concerned, that we're potentially opening ourselves up to, you know, when we do implement something, people coming back and saying, well, no, that's not what, that's not what you said, or that's not what we thought you said, that's not what you asked us. And so, and I don't know.
I would say we'd have the flexibility to, option A is maximum flexibility without undue delay. I mean, we'd work with all deliberate speed to, you know,
Yeah.
enact the intent of the voters in a way that's effective and lawful.
And I guess really the only question, there's only really, this, you know, this part is the only question that voters have to approve. The rest of the ordinance, even if there was stuff in there that people didn't feel was part of the question, those things don't have to be part of the question anyway, right? Like,
The only thing that the constitution requires.
We talked about business licenses, or we talked about, right?
Exactly right.
Yes, that is not required.
Or if some part of the, right, we didn't, we didn't need voter approval for that anyway.
Right.
If there's some part of the collection system that requires us to do something different or.
I think it goes back to what Trey was mentioning when you were up here earlier, that you're not going to hit all of it in the question, right? It's going to be, there's going to be lots of detail that doesn't need to be in the question. That will be hashed out later in the process.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add a couple things on this. Counselor Sheldon, I agree there are a lot of details to be worked out. Is there an opportunity with option A to have those kinds of challenges more than option C? Absolutely. No, no question. My recommendation to city councils, I don't believe it recommends, I don't believe that that should be enough to deter council from considering option A because we've already begun working on language. It's not, it's not, we're not starting from scratch. This will be expedited. Should there be a rare situation where there is some more macro-level situation that's occurring that would necessitate us to wait, we have an opportunity as a city and city council has an opportunity to be overly communicative with our residents about our process. And we could post-publish, we could do any number of steps. We should do any number of steps if we were going to be intentionally waiting to see if some external factor plays itself out. My point being, we would want to be as transparent as possible so that we would maintain that good faith effort. good faith effort that our voters entrusted in, in the ballot measure itself. So I, I think we've already thought about some strategies to take, in the event that that occurs.
Yeah, I think, ultimately, this is one example, I'm thinking there might be other cases that I can't think of, but what I really am envisioning is the, the business license thing type issue that we discussed. I know personally, if I voted for this, and then the ordinance came out and had a bunch of other stuff in it, I would feel that that was disingenuous. And like, if you had told me that, I wouldn't have voted for it, right? And that, that's what I worry about, is a, somehow, a, well, if I had known that, I would have voted differently. And I don't even, because I don't really know what the issues are with the sales tax collection system, and I don't know how many, what the risk is of something like that coming to fruition.
There's also another risk. There's, in terms of business licenses, there's legislation from this last session that affects issuance and requirements for business licenses. And I don't know, that may change again, because a lot of people are struggling with that one, and that may happen early in session, there may be some cleanup there. And that might be a little bit of extra time, and we might be, let's parse that out a little bit later, make sure we're in compliance with the state law, and not treading unduly on that. So there's pending, we're not saying it's absolutely sure that we're going to have obstacles, we're saying if there are, this provides the council with the best opportunity to proceed with all deliberate speed and a lawful fashion to implement the intent of the voters. And if you put specific language, and this is not specific to Tabor, these options, right?
Right.
But I, and I felt it was fair that council knew that these, these are the options for you, and it happens all the time in different ways. But if, if you implement things via the ordinance, or if you put ordinance questions as part of the referred measure, or ordinance language, then, and then you have to change, I think you're in a worse spot for having to say, I would have voted differently, right?
Yeah, no, I get that. I do, I understand, I absolutely understand the need to be able to adapt, but I am just very worried that what's going to be in the ordinance is, by necessity, going to be a lot more broad than this paragraph right here.
Well, but it says, shall the sales tax code be amended to accomplish a goal?
Yes, but this, and that's why I'm saying, what's in the ordinance, the devil is always in the details, always. And I know personally, that one detail can make the difference between my support or my not support, right? And, and we've all seen that. And so that is my, that's my concern, I don't know that there's any way around it, but my concern is that when we get to the ordinance implementation phase, we run into a, whoa, that wasn't what I thought I voted for. And I think that is, I just, I'm trying to assess in my mind, how much of a risk I think that is.
Counsel Wheel.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. I guess, to Katie's point, there is some draft language, and I think if we put draft in large letters and so on, would it be inappropriate to circulate that, so that one can see what's going on? I mean, I'd like the process to be as open and forthcoming as possible. And yes, there could be tweaks, because the state could change a rule here or there, but, but substantially, I think, you know, we're, I think substantially it tracks with the ballot language, but I think it might give us more comfort, you know, that if we saw the actual contemplated draft, you know, whatever, how many other hedge words. There's no intent, there's no intent to do something different than what we're asking the voters for. So I, but, is that possible?
Let me consider that, I'll have an answer for you, for sure, in two weeks on that, but.
I mean, in, in recognizing, it could be subject to change, but, but at least that may, excuse me, that may help alleviate any concerns. I want to double check, this is the belt and suspenders part of me. Process wise, we would take this under advisement at the next meeting and have a vote, and only one vote is required?
Yes, it'll be on a resolution.
Excellent. Russell, having a somewhat flimsy memory, your opening phrase, do we have the word municipal or city, or something like that, in, in front of tax rate?
No, because the next word is Cherry Hills Village.
Okay, that's fine.
So, yeah.
I just, you know, there's just such a propensity for confusion between what I see on my sales receipt, you know, and sometimes people don't know all the different pieces that, that make that up, and so I just wanted to be sure that the 3.5 wasn't coming out of nowhere, that it was the municipal component.
Well, I think that's, that's a valid point, because the state has this.
Yeah.
Everybody knows, another 3.5%, that goes on top, everybody puts 7, and whatever. So I think that's a good point. I mean, could I look at that, I think that's a good thing for our attorney to look at, to make it as clear as possible. I think the way it reads, given the context of the, the rest of the, you know, sentence, it probably.
Can you read it one more time?
What I have, based on that comment, is preceding the question on the slide, without changing the city's existing 3.5% sales tax rate, shall the sales tax code, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, well, it does say cities, so that at least.
I just added that. I just added it based on your comment.
Okay.
And it seems to flow okay.
You got it.
You're not uber, uber wordy.
That's all I have, aside from saying, thank you, Kyle, it's, it's, you know, the whole journey's been a pleasure, and staff, and Kathy, and everybody, it's, I think we've come a long way, and it's been a great process.
Counsel Ashton.
No questions, just, I do like the direction that we just went. I think everything that was said, I agree with, and especially again, what Mayor has added to the, to the statement, I think, I think that will clarify that we're not increasing tax. So anyway, it's all good from my end.
My one comment to Counsel, Counsel Brown's point, too. I think this is really a, remember here, that what we're changing is really from our tax code that says having a place of business in the city, to engaged in business in the city, which is a very, you know, you almost never get something as clear and as concise as that, of what the change is. So I don't think there's a lot of saying, well, you could expand that, or interpret it some way else. No, engaged, engaged in a business in a city is a well-understood term, throughout case law, and courts, and statutes, it's used all the time, engaged in business. It's defined everywhere, and so I think it's a very limiting, it's self-limiting, so for you to do, to do, you know, kind of nefarious, you know, some kind of trickery with it, it's, it, it's just not going to happen. What, but what you are talking about, I think is a good point, is your, all these implement regulations, we already have them in our code, we implement, for those having a place of business here, we have the, I mean, those are all changeable, those aren't, those aren't Tabor issues, they're not tax vote, but they're, they're regular, ordinary code changes that we discuss with people, and debate, and have readings on, and two hearings on. So I, I think it's, you know, I think this, of all things, is kind of, I think the way this has come out has been very simple, very clear, and legally, very understandable, I think so. Anyway, and credit to our attorney, thank you for pulling that together. All right. Any other discussion, any other questions? Actually, we don't need a vote today, this is just for direction, I think. You have your direction? Very good.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think Counselor Wheel wanted to provide some closing thoughts to, to give counsel some thoughts for the 16.
Yeah. Thank you again for your discussion and input, I think it's great. I certainly would be remiss if I didn't ask for your support. Has to be as individuals, not as, you know, city, associated with the city, but we certainly need that, and hope for that. Because the city, once we refer it to the ballot, we'll do the 16th, then the city has to step back and be out of it, in terms of resources, so, yeah. And I'm, I'm, I'm very encouraged with what I hear in the meetings, we had, I'll go through it in the report section, but we had a great kickoff meeting, and I think the enthusiasm and, and support is, is out there, so I'm, I'm very encouraged, of course, I never take anything for granted, so, you know, but very encouraged. Thanks.
Okay, move on then to 9B item, which is Resolution 17, is that right?
Yes.
I have 13, why do I have 13? Oh, Resolution 17, okay, I'm sorry. Resolution 17, Series 2022. I'm setting a ballot title and placing an initiated charter amendment measure on the ballot for the coordinated election held November 8, 2022, and City Clerk Gillespie, you have the.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart, good evening, counsel. Staff is presenting to counsel tonight the initiated charter amendment ballot language for discussion, and setting the ballot title. This is according to Colorado revised statute, Section 31-2-210. Just a review of what's happened so far, statement of the intent of, to file a petition was filed on April 22. The actual petition, with all the signatures, was filed on July 12. I certified the petition as sufficient on July 20, and state statute requires, there we go, that if the petition is sufficient, the governing body shall set a ballot title for the proposed amendment at its next meeting. So looking at what city council's role is tonight, you do have to set the ballot title, and it has to be tonight, this is next meeting after the petition was deemed sufficient. Where there is some discussion that can occur, is the actual wording of the ballot title, and I've put some language on the screen here, that's also in the, in the packet in the council bill, which is, we're now, now considering a resolution instead of a council bill, but it was in the packet in the council bill as well, in, as in the resolution, on the dais, some items in state statute that help you determine how best to set that ballot title. And want to note that we did get one public comment on this issue, that is on the dais as well, and I'll pass it over to the city attorney now.
Thank you. Yes, just briefly review, since this has been somewhat evolutionary. The, the recitals in the Resolution Number 17 before you recite essentially the history of how we got here, and the certification of the petition to be valid, and your requirement to set the ballot title. And then this pursuant to the requirements set forth in state law for amending charters, this resolution proposes ballot language for voting, with a yes or no for the voters. And Ms. Gillespie did point out, and the language on, on the statute she highlighted indicates some of the key principles that you need to consider, and that we considered in drafting this proposed language. So the ballot title must fairly and accurately represent the true intent and meaning of the proposed initiative. And as somewhat foretold by Mr. Rogers, there's another provision in 31, here, 3111111, that says that you are charged with considering public confusion that might be caused by a misleading title, title being another word for the language of the question. And so I think that's, that's your charge here, is to ask yourself, does the proposed language accurately reflect the, and correctly and fairly express the true meaning and intent of the measure, as you understand it to be, as submitted by the petitioners? And does it avoid confusion that might be caused amongst the, the public that will be voting on this? So I can answer questions about why this language is in here, if, if you would like, or open it up for discussion.
I think it would probably be helpful to adjust Mr. Rogers' comments, since he knows and your thoughts about it.
Sure, so the proposed initiative, have, have you all had a chance to take a, a look at what the language, the actual, the initiative, the petition contains underlines and strike-throughs, but that's not permitted by the county for ballot language. So, anyway, that initiative requires a lot of changes to Section 3.9 of the Charter, if it's approved, and it specifically references all property held for the use and enjoyment of the public. It specifically excludes 90 Meat Lane, it specifically excludes public streets and rights of way, it actually contains a full definition for open space, that is fairly broad. So trying to condense all of that, yet convey an accurate and true understanding of the intent and effect, and avoid confusion, was the goal for adding what's in that parenthetical. And then, the goal for including the language, in addition to the current requirement for voter approval to pledge or convey city parks, may also address confusion in the voting public, because currently, Section 3.9 does prohibit of conveyance or transfer of park property without voter approval, but, and parks are specifically defined in the city code by name, John Mead, Dahlia Hollow, et cetera. Open space is not, there's an open space provision, or definition, in the initiated measure, and I think it's arguable that folks use parks and open space interchangeably, without understanding that distinction, and to convey the true effect and intent of this measure, it's to protect open space, which is distinguished from parks. So that's the intent of this language as proposed.
Okay, I'm going on line, Counsel Blum, you have any questions for the staff?
I'd like to have Mr. Rogers come up again, and maybe explain the, can you go through what you did previously, and just try and explain the differences in the two?
Thank you, Councilman. Is this a little loud? Is that better if I'm back a little further?
No, it's actually pretty quiet.
Keep close.
There we go, okay.
It just sounds loud to you.
Thank you, Councilman. So the, the first change, again, that we're looking for is to eliminate the language in the parenthetical. The reason for that is, while there is a definition of open space in the measure, it, the parenthetical really gets down into the detail. It's unnecessary for the voter, the voter needs to know, this measure would prohibit the sale, or transfer, or conveyance of open space without a vote of the people. By the way, the reason that we have included the exclusion of 90 Meat Lane, the exclusion of public streets and rights of way, is because of concerns raised by the city attorney and members of the council. So it wasn't our, it wasn't our preference to include those exclusions in the language. We did that to, you know, address some good concerns that were raised. To, to put that level of detail into the title, first of all, destroys the brevity of the thing, second, it, it runs the potential of confusing voters, because it's a bunch of detail that they don't have context for. We, we think it's sufficient to simply say, look, this, this is a measure that prohibits the transfer of open space without a vote of the people. That's what it's about, that's what the title should convey. And then the second change, let me just pause there, if I could, see if.
I, I appreciate that, but go ahead on the second one. I have a, I have a question on that one, before, before we move on.
I think, let's, let's keep this just one-on-one, and go on the line, so we don't kind of get all up, yeah, go ahead.
We have, I think we can put on the screen the actual.
Yeah.
Petition language, that would be helpful for everybody, so you can see what is, what the electors signed off on.
This doesn't get printed anywhere.
No. This gets published.
In the election. In a newspaper, once.
Right. But it's not anywhere on the ballot.
It is not. I would, I would expect that the clerk would put this on her website, as something that's on the ballot. I can tell you that the campaign for the measure will, will put this language up on its website. So I, I would think that it would be out there in two or three places. But no, as is the, the law and the tradition in Colorado, lengthy measures are condensed into, you know, a single, typically a single sentence summary of the measure, and then it's left to the voter, if they want to do more, to go and find the language and study it.
Well, looking at the, what she put up on the chart here, they did define, put a definition of open space in, unless that's already in, and I think, you think it makes it a little confusing? I think it clarifies it, from the way I read that.
It's a level of detail that's not necessary. I, I look, for instance, Councilman, at the 2021 Blue Book. I look, for instance, Councilman, at the two thousand twenty-one Blue Book, what we voted on statewide. There is a measure there that is described in fourteen lines. Those fourteen lines describe a fourteen-page ballot measure with a ton of detail. And in following the same law that you guys are asked to follow tonight, the state title board condensed those fourteen pages into fourteen lines. That's the kind of distillation that the case law and the statutes on title setting require. And I can just tell you that at the state level, there would never be an effort to include details like, well, we've excluded ninety-meat lane, and we've excluded parks and rights of way. I mean, it is certainly sufficient and easier for the voter to understand if we just say, this is a measure about open space. So...
Go ahead with the second one, and we'll follow up on that.
Sure. So, the second edit that we would ask for is, and it is after the parenthetical, the language reads, "In addition to the current requirement for voter approval to pledge or convey city parks." I think this is really inserting an argument into the ballot title. This is something that, if there's opposition to this measure, the opposition may choose to say in their campaign literature, well, parks are already protected. You know, so this measure doesn't protect parks. It protects only open space and trails. And protecting parks is enough. That kind of an argument has no place in the measure. This clause doesn't describe anything that the measure does. It simply provides an argument, you know, it tells us in the title, well, parks are already protected, so don't worry about that. It really has no place in the measure, and it should be deleted.
I appreciate your input.
Counsel Shaw.
Okay. Mr. Rogers, I'm not sure any of these are really directed to you. You're welcome to stand up there, or sit back down, or sit in the front row, whatever you want to do, whatever's comfortable for you. My notes are kind of all over the board here. I guess, in no particular order, my thoughts on this... I do think parks and open space get interchanged regularly. And I actually see it in my industry all the time. People don't know the difference between the two of them, and so they just, half the people call them parks, half call them open space, and we're all talking about the same piece of dirt. I guess I do have one question for you, Trey. If you got the Blue Book condensed down to fourteen lines from a fourteen-page or ten-page, what was, how many lines was the actual ballot question? Must have been a fraction of that.
That was the ballot question.
Ballot question was the fourteen lines in the Blue Book?
Yeah. Shell state law, you know.
Okay, so it wasn't the pros and cons you're talking about?
No.
Okay.
Pros and cons were in addition, but the question that appeared on the ballot, summarizing fourteen pages.
Fourteen lines. Okay. Thank you. What's the history of this title? I heard you say, sorry, might as well stay up there. I heard you say that you were initially maybe opposed to allowing the ninety-meat lane and the right-of-way and public streets to be included. It almost, the way you said it, almost made it sound like you initially agreed to allow that language to be in the title, and now you've retracted your position? I just want to be clear on this.
No, sir. I'm going way back to the time when we first wrote the charter amendment and circulated it around. We provided it to the clerk for review, as is required. And that led to some discussions between Laura Christman and some council members, and between me and Kathy. And so, one of the issues that came up in both of those, you know, sets of conversations was, well, you know, you haven't really defined open space. And we've got ninety-meat place. That's not open space. And we said, we agree, that's not open space. But some citizen may claim that it is, and may claim that if this passes, ninety-meat place is protected as open space. And we said, all right, does it help if we exclude ninety-meat place? Yes, it would. Fine, we'll do that. What about condemning or vacating roads? And we said, you know, that's not open space either. We think, again, that's pretty clear. But there are circumstances in which a trail coincides with a street or a road. And so, to address that concern, we added the language that said, we exclude streets and public rights of way unless they're concurrent with a trail.
So, the conceding, if you will, of those things and adding them in, they're added into this proposed text on our screen right now, not into this condensed version that's...
Before anything's ever circulated.
Before anything ever gets circulated. Right.
Correct.
That's my point. Yeah.
And the only reason I raise that is, we certainly never envisioned that a few months later, we'd be looking at title language, right? That included the detail like, we've excluded ninety-meat lane, and we've excluded streets. I mean, that's, you know, we're kind of paying the price for being reasonable people and making amendments to the language. We're now seeing it, you know, come back to us in a form that, I mean, I've never seen that level of detail in a ballot title. So, that was the only reason for that.
Fair enough. I guess I would say, I don't see if this, if it passed the way you'd like the language in the question to be written, and having it written the actual charter amendment text, I'm not worried about somebody coming back and claiming that ninety-meat lane or the Bridle Pass or trails or anything was open space. That is not my concern. My concern is whether somebody misunderstands what they're voting on. I guess I have one more question. I'd be curious if Kyle Blakely would come up and give us his thoughts about this language.
Oh, I don't, I don't think we can do that.
I'm going to request we don't do that.
I have a feeling it might be a hot potato.
That would be scope creep and...
I'm going to probably not give Kyle the floor.
That's all I've got then. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Counsel Brown.
Okay. I'm going to start with the second suggested change first. In addition to the current requirement for voter approval to pledge or convey city parks, I agree that, wholeheartedly, that this is inserting an argument into the title, and in fact, a very misleading argument. Because the current charter only protects three parks. It doesn't protect, or four, not Woody Hollow, it doesn't protect Volunteer Park, it doesn't... It, there are only a few parks that are defined as parks. And so I think to say that city parks are protected in the charter right now is extremely misleading, because it's only a few of them. Well, at least Woody Hollow, Volunteer Park, and all of the little, those are the big, the biggest, you know, contiguous pieces of property. The only ones that are in there, to my knowledge, are John Mead, Blackmore Common, Dahlia Hollow Park, John Mead Park, Three Pond Park, and Woody Hollow Park. Oh, Woody Hollow is in there. Okay.
What park is not included in that?
Volunteer Park is not included in that.
Where's Volunteer?
It's up by Hamden. It's in my district.
Okay, sorry.
It's just a grassy, you know, area. So, I think it's misleading to say that parks are protected by the current charter amendment. And by that same token, I think Kathy, when you said that the intent of this initiative is to protect open space, that really isn't the intent. The intent is to protect all parks, open space, and trails. And so I think that saying that some portion of that is already protected, you know, may be true, but it's not something that, it's not a distinction that I think the average resident of Cherry Hills Village understands.
Kathy, what do we consider Quincy Farm? Is that considered open space?
Well, it's open space. It's definitely, it's not defined as a park.
Right.
So, it's, that wouldn't be in there either. I mean, and so I think that that would be very misleading. I think there are people in Cherry Hills Village who think Quincy Farm is a park, or they think, you know, whatever. So, I feel pretty strongly that that's inserting a misleading argument into the title. Now, in terms of the, what's in the parenthetical, I agree that this is, again, getting into a level of detail that the average person in Cherry Hills Village, they don't even know we own ninety-meat lane, much less what it is. I mean, without looking it up on a map, is that a park? Is that a, what is that? So, I think that this is starting to get into, I think there are people who don't understand what a right-of-way is. Is a trail a right-of-way? I think there are a lot of people who think it is. It's not. So, I think that this requires a level of understanding and sophistication about classification of public property that the average person doesn't have. So, I think that if we just attribute the most common meaning to these words, to your point, Dan, parks, open space, it's all the same thing to most people. Maybe not to us, maybe not to staff, maybe not, but to most people, it's all the same thing. And so if we read the title in the shoes of a person who is going to attribute the most common meanings to these words, I think that including that parenthetical starts to make it more confusing instead of less. So, I would support removing the two phrases as requested by the Citizens Initiative Committee.
Counselor Wheel.
Thank you. I probably, I'm really sort of, I have no problem with the deletion of the sentence outside of the parenthetical comment. The concern I have is pretty focused. I don't want to find myself, it's my understanding that ninety-meat lane is owned as more or less a store of value, that it's not intended to be a park. However, there is a lot of ambiguity, certainly in the voters' minds. And I would say, when I was a resident, I wouldn't have known the difference between ninety-meat lane, you know, Hutto Commons, Quincy Farm, or any of the rest of that. They all look like parks to me. They got a lot of grass and trees and so on. And I don't, I, what would prevent us, if we deleted the parenthetical, from finding ourselves in a situation where we wanted to turn that, liquidate that store of value? And somebody says, whoa, wait a minute, I voted for a protection of parks, and that sure looked like a park to me, and, you know, you're trying to sell it, and that's not okay. That's not what we voted for. What protects us from finding ourselves in that situation? Yeah, I guess, yeah. That's my, that's my big concern. The rest of it, I can, I don't have a big concern.
Counselor Wheel, if I could respond to that first, just, I want to distinguish between the text of the proposed charter amendment and what's in the question in the resolution, right? So, if I understand your question correctly, you're wondering, what happens if you don't clarify ninety-meat lane? That is what's been signed off by the voters. That will, if this question, right? So, so the point that Mr. Rogers is making on behalf of the committee is that that level of detail is not needed in here, in this question, that the voters will see for that initiated measure to go into effect if this is approved.
And see, even if we deleted the phrase about to include all property held for use and enjoyment, the excluding ninety-meat lane phrase is what's giving me a certain amount of heartburn. Because I think there is ambiguity in the voters' minds about, you know, parks and... And if we're not specific about that piece of property in the title, what people are reading when they're voting, how are we sure that it isn't going to come back around and bite us?
You're also posing a question about confusion of the voters and conveying the true intent and meaning of the question.
Well, Kathy, it seems to me, just following up on what Randy said, the fact that it's on this proposed charter amendment that four hundred and fifty people, whoever it was, signed it, if they didn't see that, and somebody goes to vote, they're not going to know about ninety-meat lane and the exclusion of ninety-meat lane from it without disclosing it here. That sort of gives me a little heartburn, like it does with Randy, the fact that four hundred and fifty people who ever signed it know that, and they couldn't be held against them. But the rest of the people that sees just the title wouldn't have any idea that that was involved, and somebody could raise it at some point. So, I tend to support what Randy's objection is here.
Mr. Wheel, I need you.
Yeah, no, I, that's what I had to say.
Counselor Savani.
You know, for me, it comes down to, I actually like to see what that, what was on the ballot that was signed. Was it, is it this thing?
That's it.
Right there?
Yeah.
And we're saying that the summary here is a representation of what people signed.
So, if they vote yes on this, then these changes would go into effect? And so, yes, that's, is that an accurate summary?
And based on what I'm hearing, is that I think there are a lot of questions that it is not an accurate summary. Am I hearing this correct from the other fellow councilmen? Is that where the concern is, where the question is? Trying to get my head wrapped around this, because I've not been involved with this, and I'm sort of hearing this, you know, different pieces here, so...
No, I don't think it's any, there's no contention that it's inaccurate. In fact, Mr. Rogers, when he first said it, he said, this is accurate. All of this is accurate, as it is right here. So, that is gone by. The question is about whether this is confusing, or whether it's clear, or whether accurately, whether when you're voting on this, you're going to get this, and you won't be surprised by it.
Okay. I mean, you know, as I read this, I do believe that an average voter will have a lot of questions, will not fully grasp this, or will have, say, well, how about this? How about that? That's all for it.
I think, you know, and part of it is, we are limited, as our attorney said, we can't do a red-line version, which is actually the ideal way. I mean, then people can then know what they're voting, and it would be clear, but we can't do that. We're stuck here. I'll make my comments, or one, I agree with what Counselor Wheel said in spades, and with ninety-meat lane, because if we pass this, and without that in there, and then we sell ninety-meat lane, we're going to get people to say, wait a minute, we just voted for open space, and clearly, that's open space. Because the way you define open space here is, open space is everything that you, for the, that people use and enjoy. All public property in the city that people use and enjoy is open space. That is a, that's a huge definition. It's unlike anything in the statutes or anyplace else, and it's verbatim, and it'll apply not only in this charter, but everyplace else in open space. So, that's, you know, so parks are just a small subset of that definition. They're clearly using and benefiting and enjoying, you know, but so is a lot of other stuff. I mean, I don't know where this all goes. A lot of property in the village is potentially open space that we wouldn't think is open space because it's anything we use and enjoy. And use and enjoy may be as something as a vista. It could be, I mean, we could say we're using and enjoying ninety-meat lane because it doesn't, there's nothing built there, and we can walk around and see the mountains. I mean, this use and enjoy is a very broad term about what that means, and it means potentially this chambers, because we use and enjoy it. Because it doesn't say anything about open. It doesn't say anything about sunshine. It is a very broad definition. I'm just saying it. But my point is, I agree absolutely with Counselor Wheel, that this is a, this would be a dangerous thing to pass this without the language of ninety-meat lane in here, and then try to sell ninety-meat lane, and then defend it and say, oh, it's not really, it wasn't really there. You'd have to say, well, it wasn't in the ballot. It wasn't what we voted on, but you have to go back and look at the newspaper. Well, who, nobody does that. Nobody does that. I'm not finished, though. I'll let you respond. The other one I disagree with as well, I think that, here's the issue with the current, and the reason I agree with the city attorney in including, in addition to the current requirement, if we had a text here, people could see that, you know, what the existing charter three point nine does, it protects, it protects parks. They can't know that now. So, without that sentence in there, people could be saying, I want to protect parks, and I don't care, you know, I want to protect our major parks. And that's what this does. And they were, without the knowledge that actually those five parks are already protected, and they're already subject to that. So, it's, it is more accurate what our city attorney wrote. It's, and it's not that long, and as Mr. Rogers said, it's accurate, but it explains to people that change. Because I think most people won't know that our five parks are already protected by three point nine. So, I think that putting in here that that explanation is necessary to avoid misleading people... people into thinking they're protecting all of our parks with this, which of course, you know, is, is the ultimate. I mean, you're, you're, you want to, you want to get this passed, and I understand that's a better way to pass it, to say, a lot of people aren't going to know, and they go, yeah, I want to protect the parks, because if they already know the parks are already protected, I think that's a valuable piece of information. I think they should know it.
It doesn't go in the title.
And I think, I'm, so I think they should know it when they're voting, and that's the only way I think they're really going to get to know realistically, it's only going to be in this language. I don't think it's longer, I think it's accurate, I think Mr. Rogers said it's accurate, I think the city attorney, I think it's accurate, I would, I would urge you to keep, keep it as our city attorney has written it, because I think it's accurate, and I think it's fair, and I think it's fair.
But it's nowhere in the initiative. And so to insert your rationale and logic into the title of a citizen-referred initiative, which appears, that appears nowhere in here, you're adding, it's not part of the question to the voters. It's an argument, perhaps, why it's not necessary, and that can be made in a blue book submission, in pro or con?
You're talking about the parks now.
I'm talking about this, in addition to the current requirement.
There's no blue book.
You can submit, no, you're right.
This is it.
So there can be a committee to, you know, to convince people otherwise, but I don't think it's appropriate for people, anyone, us as a council, to insert our own slant on the initiative into the title. It's not part of any of this, this talks about protecting parks, all of them. The fact that some of them are already protected is irrelevant to this question. It might be an argument to vote that it's not necessary, but that's an argument that can be made.
I'd like to keep order and recognize people in the chair, but I would point out that this petition that was signed does say that. I mean, so that, you know, that, what people, who people signed this knew that they're using parks. I think that's what people voting on this should know as well. So that's my only point. Anybody else? I'll go with Counselor.
Just a quick question, because I noticed when they signed that, they're talking about all future acquired property too. So by enacting this, we go out and buy some open space up here, whatever, we can never sell that, we can never dispose, unless, unless we go to the voters. We understand, that's correct. My sense is, we need to have the 90 Mead Lane disclosure in there, because it was in the charter amendment, but those 450 people know about, the other 1,600 people don't. I think that's going to be there. The other part, I tend to agree with, with Katie, that it is supposed, superfluous, there you go, on that language. So that's some total of my comments, but I do believe strongly that we need to include the 90 Mead Lane.
Wait, Counselor Sheldon.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Kathy, can you bring back up what we're charged with approving tonight? The, the, no, but the, no, I want the, where it says that we're, yeah, let's see. Counsel's role. God, I think it cuts both ways. I mean, I think it's misleading if you take it out. I think it's misleading if you leave it in. I don't, honestly, I don't know that there's a real good answer. Unfortunately, and unfortunately, I just don't think it can happen in time, but I think, you know, I know that we talked about getting some market feedback on 90 Mead, and getting into an exact session soon to talk about getting that to the market, but it probably can't, those things probably can't happen, and select a Realtor to take it to the market, and get a contract done, and get a closing done by the November date, by an election.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel Ram.
So for, for those that feel strongly about the 90 Mead Lane exclusion, which I, that makes sense to me, because it is, I do see how someone could come back again, as we talked about in the last measure, and say, but wait a minute, what about changing the parenthetical to only directly address the specific exclusion of 90 Mead Lane? Yes, assuming that people don't think of a public street as open space. Because again, the actual text is very specific, but, so the question is, when somebody is reading this ballot initiative to vote on it, would they believe that the word open space means a street?
It troubles me a little bit to, to cut it up and put, leave some in and take some out. I'd rather leave it all in or take it all.
Well, I think 90 Mead Lane is the only thing in there that arguably could be conceived as open space by some. And so I think it makes sense, if there's an explicit exclusion, to exclude that. I don't think most people think of a public street as open space.
If I could just add, just note that in the language on your screen, open space does contain a definition of land which the city has or hereafter.
I understand that, and when, and if the issue comes up, Kathy, they can go back and read this. The question is, when I'm voting on this, I'm reading this sentence on a ballot, do I think that open space means a street? Or am I already assuming that you're excluding that? I understand that the definition is kind of broad, and that's why these exclusions are specifically also included in the language. But I think that when, when you say the conveyance of any city property interest in any trail or open space within the city limits, I think the only real exclusion that might be necessary is 90 Mead Lane.
I can get behind that.
Well, I think, I think when you say use and enjoyment, right, that's, that's the definition, any public property used and enjoyed, streets are used and enjoyed.
But that's going to be, they're requesting for that to be removed too. But the parenthet, the whole parenthetical would be removed, so.
I don't think people would know they're voting on that.
I don't think you remove that whole thing.
Yeah, Counselor Wheel, you have the, you have the floor.
Would it be possible to shift that opening parenthesis to, in front of the word excluding, so it says excluding 90 Mead Lane, public streets and rights of way? I do think that there is also a pretty large, you know, I mean, we deal with this stuff all the time, and we understand the difference between right of way and between a park and open space and stuff like that. But I am trying to think about it more from a resident perspective, and the, the public streets, yeah, there's probably, that may not be as critical, but the rights of way, I do think, I think 90 Mead Lane, and I think we're all kind of in agreement on that, poses a risk of misunderstanding. And, and it's, it's not, you know, yeah, I want to try and say what we want to do. And, and the rights of way, you know, that, I think there's some, again, ambiguity in the mind of a typical resident as to what a right of way is. And I think that the, that the petitioner was, you know, okay, excluding that, so I don't think we're trying to misconstrue intent. On the other hand, I, I, I do feel some obligation to be clear, you know, and communicative, so that we don't open ourselves up to risk, misunderstandings, things like that, 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 because I don't, I mean, we're not trying to be tricky, we're trying to be straightforward and explain it like it is.
So Randy, would you move the parentheses from where, in front of the word "to," to in front of the word "but"? So would we, to include all property held?
Yeah, that's fine.
And then put the parentheses at the word, in front of the word "but"? I think that makes it very clear.
Yep, yep, and it's, it's a lot less wordy, but at the same time, and, and I don't, I don't know that the phrases, you know, using, public enjoy, all that, add a lot to it, to communicative, you know, right? But, but I do think we're in agreement on 90 Mead Lane, and the public streets and rights of way at least give us a firm footing, should, you know, some debate ensue that, you know, caught, it isn't ambiguous what people voted on, is what I'm trying to say.
So to make sure I understand, your suggestion would read, or open space within the city limits to include all property held for the use and enjoyment of the public, open paren, excluding 90 Mead Lane, public streets and rights of way, close paren? Is that, is that what you were saying?
Well, I think, I think, I think he was just looking to drop.
I was wondering, are you suggesting to drop the "to include"? So, so then, so it would read, your suggestion would read, or open space within the city limits, open, open paren, excluding 90 Mead Lane, public streets and rights of way, close paren?
Exactly. Exactly, that's, that's what I was thinking, I mean.
I could live with that.
You know, that's.
Yes? Okay.
Any other comments? Otherwise, I'm, I've got ready, I'm ready to call for a motion. If somebody wants to make a motion, try one.
I move, oh, wait, did you want to make a final comment?
You're here, I might as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of closing comments. First, I wanted to address this question about the broadness of the definition of open space. When our courts look at a term in a statute, under the rules of statutory interpretation, they give words their plain and common meaning. So there's, a court is not going to look at this measure and say, open space includes the council chamber, or open space includes streets and, and rights of way. I mean, that's, you're, you're, when you, when you focus on including all property held for the use and enjoyment of the public, you ignore the fact that what we're talking about is open space. And a court looks at that and says, what does open space mean? Let's open the dictionary and figure out what, what, how that term is defined, and that's how people think it is, is interpreted, and that is how it gets interpreted. So, Mr. Mayor, you and I may disagree on that, I just wanted to get that on the, well, it's, it is a rule of construction.
It is if there's not a definition provided, but when there's a.
When you provide a definition, all bets are off. You, you got to, and I know something about Camden's construction, I, I'm, I'm an editor of the Civil Jury, Pattern Jury Instructions, okay, I know about it. So no, you've done something different here. This is a huge, you've identified it, a definition, you've given its own definition, that'll be followed in its plain and ordinary meaning of the words that you've used.
Yeah. Well, it also includes, it also includes the word land, the city has to acquire it for the purpose of the use and enjoyment of members of the public. I mean, there's a lot in there that, that tells me there's no court that's going to look at this and decide that the council chamber is, is open space. So I, you know, listen, I, good lawyers can differ, that's, that's certainly my interpretation.
They, in fact, that's your job, right?
Do that every day.
That's a provision.
But finally, I, I see a lot of wisdom in what Councilmember Brown, or Mayor Protem Brown, has suggested. I, I think she is exactly right. There's no citizen that's going to think that a street or right of way is open space. It makes every bit of sense in the world to exclude those words. So I get the, I get the concern about 90 Mead Place. I mean, that, that sounds like an issue that creates some discussion, some confusion here, but, you know, certainly, streets and rights of way ought to come out. And again, would appreciate you also taking out the reference to protection for existing parks, and appreciate your indulgence.
You bet. I, I do say we have lots of streets and right of ways that are not developed, and there's still streets and right of ways, and people might think different things, because they may back up to it, a street and right of way, and think that's open space. Just saying. So I, I, I think that, I, I still think the language our city attorney had is accurate, I think Mr. Rogers said is accurate, but I understand. Counsel, and, well, Counsel Brown, or Wheel, do you have one?
One more quick comment, though, I, you know, we're talking about six words on public streets and rights of way, and I don't think it conflicts with your intent or your message or any of that, so I'm not sure that it, you know, it takes away anything, and I, and I don't think it adds a huge amount of encumbrance on the, on the, but I think it, it just is one more opportunity to clarify, just so that folks know that what they're voting on, and, and they don't come back and say, gosh, you know, we misunderstood, or, no, you said something different than, than what you're doing, and, or we voted on something, you know, it's, so I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, you'll, you'll feel that that's not an undue burden.
All right, well, let me try to go off the board here, since our motion is totally different. I move to approve Resolution Number 17, Series 2022, setting a ballot title and placing an initiated charter amendment measure on the ballot for the coordinated election held November 8, 2022, with the following change to Section 2, that the city council hereby refers the following ballot language to the voters at said election. Shall Section 3.9 of the City of Cherry Hills Village Home Rule Charter be amended to require voter approval for the sale, vacation, or conveyance of any city property interest in any trail or open space within the city limits, open parentheses, excluding 90 Mead Lane, public streets, and rights of way, close parentheses, except that voter approval shall not be required for leases or licenses of less than five years that would not materially diminish the public's opportunity to use and enjoy the property?
Second. Do we have that? Let's, let me take a chance for the clerk to see if you, do you have that language?
Katie, can you look at the screen and see if?
Yes, I understand, is there a comma there? I don't know if there needs to be a comma after the parentheses, but that looks right. Yeah, real time editing, nice, Laura. Okay.
All right, a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I don't see any, anybody raising their hand? I'll call for a vote, and this is just, oh, wait a minute, this is a, just a voice vote, this is a resolution.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? I think you have it. You have your language. All right. Item 9C, new business, Board of Adjustment Appeals Vacancy, City, Kirk Gillespie.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, members of city council. Staff has been notified that one of our Board of Adjustment and Appeals members, Bill Rapson, has moved out of the city and therefore has resigned from the BOA, creating a vacancy. Staff does have one application, an applicant who is interested in the BOA, who originally applied for the Art Commission, that Mayor Protem Brown and Counselor Wheel interviewed, and so staff is asking if council would prefer to appoint this applicant, or open up, solicit further applications for the BOA.
I think, I remember when we interviewed candidates, we did have many strong candidates and not enough openings, so I would be in favor, if, if she has expressed interest in serving, to appoint Ms. Vogel.
Did you interview? I'm fine, do we need a second, or?
No, no, it's just direction.
I'm just looking for direction. If anyone has any other comments or concerns with that, then I'll bring forward a, well, we'll bring an actual resolution for, for vote for council. Thank you.
All right, reports. Briefly, on July 20, I had lunch with the South Metro Mayors, it was hosted by Mayor of Littleton downtown. On July 27, I had a meeting with the, it was a Zoom meeting with the Hamden Mobility and Safety Citizens Advisory Committee, that's talking about changes to Hamden, big changes, I mean, really refreshing, big multimodal issues and things. I've raised on that call, and I've been raising the issue of cut-through traffic, and the problems with, you know, the concerns that Cherry Hills Village has with cut-through on Hamden, where Hamden gets backed up, and emphasizing that good flow on Hamden is important to Cherry Hills Village. And also kind of dovetails into our master planning process, I believe, and talking about, to the extent it talks about cut-through traffic. So there will be, for everybody's calendar, on August 30, Open House in Inwood High School to take public input. So really, everybody, you know, if we can get voices there, the more, the better, talking about our, our vision of Hamden and potentially, you know, continuing on. Part of the problem is Hamden goes from two lanes to three lanes, two lanes, and has different, different, different speed limits on it, that's all kind of, isn't consistent with safety, and good safety, so there's lots of plans. There's a potential for opening up three lanes all the way, I mean, potentially, you know, if there's enough land there, that's one thing I think that would really help, help us. And actually, there were comments from others, not me, saying that they had the same problem with cut through, that they used ways, and were traveling in ways directed them through, in fact, Cherry Hills Village, to get around Hampton. So, you know, it's a, it's a problem, and we should be, we should be there in force. That's August 30th at Inwood High School. Tomorrow, have a meeting in the Metro Mayor's Caucus. Again, I'm on the executive committee of that, and that'll be a full morning meeting. On August 4th, there's a kickoff meeting for the Region 9 Opioid Governance Committee that I somehow got volunteered for. I'll go and wave the flag for Cherry Hills Village, even though our stake is small in that, in that committee. On the 10th of August, we will have a, it's a mayor, we'll have our Mayor's Lunch for August, but we're also meeting with XL and CML on undergrounding issues, and that'll be at CML's headquarters. And those are the issues that we talked about last year, last year as well. On the 12th of August, we have our Mayor's Managers and Commissioners Meeting, I believe, and I'll be there with Chris. And finally, the last thing I had is a heads up for everybody. I had an email from Marapo County Commissioners, saying that they're going to send out a poll. Did you get that, too?
Yes.
So everybody got that. They're going to send out a poll about issues of the county, because they have, they have challenges, and all kinds of challenges, so be aware it's coming, and they said, you know, if you have questions about it, know it's coming. That's all I had.
Just two things. One is, Jay, thank you for the variable speed sign that hopefully now we can get turned on and slow people down. I think even the police department, we talked about outside today, said that's a big help. The other thing is that I had lunch today with somebody who's talking about a compliment to the police department, as to how they reacted to somebody that was sexually assaulted. I don't want to go into any details, but they said the police department handled that very professionally, and said to compliment the department on behalf of this person. So that's all.
Started with Miss National Night Out. I obviously got here about a minute and a half late, as it was. Back to 90 Mead Lane. I want to just stress the urgency of this, and I know you're working on it. I do, I understand that it's in process, and I don't need to know any detail about the process it's in right now, but the market's changing, and we've been warned by certain people in this room, in the audience over there, that aren't named Kyle, that this would be a good time to be selling this, for a long time now, we've been told, and I think it's proving up to be right right now, and I'm just seeing, I think we're all seeing a little bit of softening in maybe the real estate market. So I think we need to keep that process going as quickly as your schedule, and the real estate industry who you're meeting with, or whatever the process is, can allow.
We have an update for you tonight.
Okay, great. I'll look forward to hearing that. Thanks for the update on Friday afternoon from the two of you guys about Zayo getting those power lines, or the communication lines down, starting next week. Excited to see some of that restoration finally happen, and end to the never ending Quincy undergrounding.
Here.
You have an update?
No, I said, here, here. I second that.
Um. Can't even read my own writing. I forgot my glasses. Oh, I'm sorry we didn't get to hear the master plan update from Paul. I'm looking forward to hearing that, I guess, soon, unless you guys have an update for us tonight, but. And then, the final thing I want to bring up, and I met with Paul about this last week, and Chris and I have talked a little bit about it as well. I am asking that our staff take a look at the possibility of cellphone coverage, again, improving our cellphone coverage in the village. And it could include a variety of different things, but not ready to talk about it yet. I just want to bring it up so you know that we're exploring it again. I think we did, done it every few years, kind of looked into it a little bit, so doing that right now. That's it. Thanks.
Just a few things. Kudos to the Police Department and Chief Lyons for a lovely night out. It was fun. I thought it was well attended. It was hot, but at least it wasn't pouring rain like the last movie night, which brings me to my next question, which is, are we having a movie night?
August 20th.
On the, is it on the 20th? Okay. How do I not know about that? Okay. And then.
It was probably in an email.
It probably was. I, for everyone, just for your benefit, I am not able to access my Cherry Hills email. I have not been able to for a couple of weeks, and we're working on getting it out, but, yes, but when I, like, I didn't know that the meeting had changed. I didn't know. There's a lot of stuff I don't know. But anyway, talking about Hampton, and kind of the issues with all that, there was an interesting story on NPR, this, I believe, this morning. I'm pretty sure it was Hoboken, New Jersey, but I could be wrong. Hasn't had a traffic-related fatality in four years. I thought that was really impressive for a big city, and it was an interesting story about how they have gone about that, improving sightlines, and so I just thought it was really interesting, is not particularly relevant for our small city, but, you know, there are certain things, particularly intersections, where we do intersect Hampton and Bellevue and University, that might be interesting to take away from that. And that's it.
Thanks. Not much new in the Dr. Cog world. It's still working on finalizing the Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP allocations and projects. They've been prioritized, and money sorted out there, and greenhouse gas emissions. Those are, they're still working on modeling, and what can be done to meet the goals, so that we don't forfeit, you know, highway monies from the federal government. We had our kickoff meeting of our, changing topics, a kickoff meeting of our Sales Tax Group. We selected our official name, Villagers for Code, Tax Code Cleanup. And so we need that to register in the bank accounts, and all kinds of other forms and things, so, but that's the official name. I would like to extend an invitation to everybody here to be a part of that. I recognize that there are time pressures and inabilities to make the meetings and so on, but I also think that it's important, as residents, that is, you know, I extend the invitation. I think it's also important for you to be on the distribution list, the mailings, things like that, so that you're informed, should questions come up, you'll be able to, you'll be in the know, you know, and we certainly need, you know, all the support we can get.
Personal email addresses?
Yeah, that, yes, we've been using those as well, so that it's, yes, sure, to answer that question, absolutely. The meeting itself, aside from the name, and we've got a great bunch of people involved already, and that's exciting. We're still committed to growing the group, so that recruiting hasn't stopped, and if good names come up in your conversations as potential supporters, please forward them to myself, Kyle, somebody. Which brings us to Kyle. One of the decisions made was to retain Kyle as a consultant through election time, so he's on board with us, and, you know, he's done a great job, and I'm convinced he will continue to do that, and we'll get this across the goal line. We have, you know, calendar events, Gantt charts, roster of committee members, and a variety of other things, which I think we should probably give you as well, transmit to you via email. Not voluminous stuff, but, you know, nitty gritty stuff. The Gantt chart talks about major events, and responsibilities, and timeframes, and so on. You know, two major roles. We got to get the word out, communicate market, and fundraising is the other part of it, so that we can pay for, you know, mailings, and printing, and all the rest of it. But I think we're off to a real good start. We've decided to meet every other Thursday between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. at Buell Mansion, so convenient, and thank you, Russell, for the help with securing the meeting space. That's, that's great. And we're also working on some electronic, you know, remote options, so that, I think the group felt that it was good to meet in person. Every once in a while, somebody's on vacation or out of town, and so in that case, we're going to try to get some remote hookup, so that we, we get going. You know, we can accommodate that. So that's, that's the news, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but I think we're off to a real good start. I'm excited. That's all I have.
No report. I do have a question. I know Randy brought up, a couple of months ago, sort of a comment around, you know, is our city moving toward, you know, getting more electric vehicle? I think there were comments around looking into electrical lawn mowers. Any, anything that has come out of that, that you can comment on?
Sure. This last year, I've been doing some research, looking into the state funding for those charging stations. I've talked with XL about their program. We've actually, in the Parks Department, been looking at electric options. We actually purchased a number of electric trimmers this year. They don't serve the best purpose when we're trying to do all of Quincy, but we are utilizing those for our improves around City Hall and our city entry features. We're looking at electric lawn mowers in the future, as push and riding mowers. We've looked into electric utility vehicles right now. That is not feasible, because there is no electric utility vehicles that can run a plow system. So for those vehicles to be utilized half of the year, it's just, the technology is not quite there yet. So, yeah, there's a number of things we're looking at. Chris and I have talked about in the future, as we replace the pool car for the administration hall here, as doing that as a full electric. So there are a few things that need to be added to the master plan, stating, you know, specific things about the city supporting electric vehicles, and a number of other things. So when we do apply for those grants, we have that documentation, that that is something the city is striving to towards.
For staff reports, we will start with directors.
Well, as mentioned, tonight, we wrapped up our National Night Out, and I just want to publicly acknowledge the outstanding work our staff did to put that together. I thought it was quite successful. I couldn't be more proud of them, their work, and the outcome of that event. It will be one of many to come, as I mentioned two weeks ago, when we last met. Coffee with a Cop will be a monthly endeavor. The first one is August 24th at 9:00 a.m. to 10:00. And we hope to do that monthly, turnout dependent. And additional community programs are in the works, and I'll be happy to update council as those progress. Thank you.
As Counselor Sheldon mentioned, we're hopefully going to come to a close on the Quincy undergrounding here in the near future. Unfortunately, as soon as that wraps up, Denver Water will be at Quincy and Holly for a very prolonged and very major replacement of their pump station that sits under the park there at Holly and Quincy. A lot of those facilities.
Not a park.
It's not a park. It is a pump station. And unfortunately, a lot of those valves and things are right in the middle of the street. We have been working closely with Denver Water, trying to figure out some parking for their contractors offsite, busing them in, limiting on-street parking, giving them a few extended hours outside of our working hours on those mains. We restrict mains during school from three, or nine to three. We're going to stretch those a little and do 8:30 to 3:30 with the contractor, just trying to get, to shorten the time period. It's a four-phase project, and there will be times when there's nothing we can do, and they have to remove a 96-inch valve from the middle of Holly and the middle of Quincy. So we need water as much as we need roads, but staff will continue to work with Denver Water. They are providing us information to put on our website and our social media. We'll have a lot of signage out, but there will be some major disruptions in there.
Jay, do the, do the traffic control plans call for that intersection to be closed, like entirely?
No, there will be no entire closures. They will always have at least one lane of traffic in each direction.
And I assume, I assume I don't even need to ask this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. I assume when this is all done, Denver Water will be responsible for going back in and putting a new layer of asphalt on top?
Yes. Yes.
How long is the project, do you know?
The project, it's a little over a year total.
Plan to go a different way.
And we also, we do have a market analysis complete for 90 Mead Lane. We received that today. City Manager Kramer and I have not looked at that, but we will be scheduling an executive session, I believe, next, next month. Or next. Next meeting, not month, I'm sorry. Next meeting to talk to council about that.
Jay, do you have a plan to communicate, like, through the crier and all the rest of it? The closures, the road construction activity?
Yes, yes. We've already started that. We had an article in the crier that's coming out, or is out. Just came out. So we put an article in there. We're working with Denver Water's Public Relations Staff to get more for our website, for The Villager, for all of our social media. There will be signage out. We asked them not to put up the big flashing signs in the neighborhood, but there will be signage with Denver Water's phone number, so they're not calling my office.
Might I also suggest that we consider a few signs right at that location that say, you know, to receive updates, join our list?
Yeah.
With a URL or something of how they can sign up for the city's notification list.
Yep.
And a, and a description of what's going on, and what the timeframe is that they should expect, I mean, that's important, I think. Great.
Do that.
Thanks.
Finance Administration has been very busy, as you can tell. Laura and the City Clerk's Office has been working on the budget, ballot measures on a daily basis, and I just want to applaud Laura for staying on top of all the legalities and deadlines, and resolutions, and red lines, and everything that you've been going through. So thank you very much for that. In less than two months, we will be providing council with the proposed budget for 2023, so that'll be September 20th, so we're busy working on that. We will also have a budget tool that will be new to the city this next year. It's a digital budget, and it'll be available on the city's website, and it's going to be cloud-based, and it'll provide better communication to the constituents, and very user-friendly, and this company works with smaller municipalities like the Town of Avon and Manitou Springs, so they've had really good results, so we're excited about that. And most important thing, it's very affordable, so you will see that happen as well this budget season, so thank you.
Laura, did you have anything?
Just a reminder that Candidate Information Session is next Tuesday, August 9th, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m., and Movie Night is August 20th. Candidate Information Session.
Counsel?
Yeah.
Just, I have quite a few, actually, for council tonight. Mr. Mayor, first of all, the opioid body that you are on, I think it's you and Randy, I believe, is that right? Or Mike, that's right, Mike. We are a non-voting member, so I can't stress this enough. Our attendance is completely optional. They've also indicated to us that they would likely give everybody who's a non-voting member a heads up if there's something that might go beyond what I would call normal operating business. So don't feel obligated. They don't take attendance for non-voting members, so it's just if we want to keep current.
Well, I, my obligation is for the first meeting. This is the first one.
Okay.
I'll go to kickoff, and then I'll.
Play it by ear. That makes sense. I, I don't want, I just want you to understand that we intentionally signed up for this model, so that we wouldn't have to over-attend.
Sure.
So Counselor Sheldon is correct. We had originally. We had originally scheduled for the master plan study session to occur tonight due to a family emergency from planning manager Workman. We did have to kick that down to the next meeting. Luckily, there was no study session scheduled for the next meeting, so it's only a two-week delay. I can tell you, though, that the Citizens Advisory Task Force meeting occurred last week. That was a rather substantial milestone in the entire project. Draft goals and action items, meaning all the way, not just the high-level vision guiding principles, but all the way down to the action items were all laid out for the Citizens Advisory Task Force. There was a series of recommended deletions, additions, modifications, all completely appropriate. And, but there was no, there was no alarm that we were on the wrong track, that a chapter was missing the base or missing the mark. So the process is continuing forward. Our consultants are now, all systems go on filling in the gaps. The presentation to city council is, is an update so that you're not caught off guard when it comes time to actually vote on it, so that you're familiar with the issues. I will say, if there are, if you notice a specific goal that you think is going to be a real problem, like a deal killer, we would want to know that. I think our planning and zoning commission would want to know that. But the primary intent is really just for an update to keep you apprised about where we're at and get an overall vibe or feeling. If Counselor Gallagher were here, he's asking me this almost every time we talk about it. You know, he would ask me, well, if you had to summarize, would you say that we're continuing down the same path that we've continued over the last 50 years? Or are we starting to change direction? Every time. And the good news is, and I think we have a P&amp;Z member here with us tonight who could confirm or deny, I believe the entire intent is really to keep the same direction that we've been going. There are enhancements, there's clarifications, lots of clarifications about what that continued direction will be. But the overall direction is really remaining the same. Tomorrow, I'm going to be sending council an email that I received from a resident, Carl Friedman. He lives on Cherry Hills Drive over north of the country club. He backs up to a property that's on Sunset Drive, 19 Sunset Drive. They have had a series, they've had building permits that have been active and extended, and then those have expired, and they've applied for new ones, which means they have to pay for the fees all over again, every- He is extremely frustrated that, well, first of all, he's frustrated that the noise from the larger equipment that, you know, backs up and it beeps has been going on for years. He's also frustrated that our code does nothing to stop somebody from applying for building permits and getting extensions. So I am going to be sending that to you because he sent that to us with concerns, and I think he wants you to know about those. The reason, I delayed slightly by sending this to you because I wanted for us to be able to reach out to the contractor and try and, there's what the code says, and then there's what we can work out with folks outside of the code, right? How can we just talk with people, establish a relationship, and see what else we can do to help people out? I think our code enforcement folks have had a chance to reach out to them, talk with them. Does look like we have a timeline of December that the, that earth-moving equipment really will stop, and it will turn and transition to more of an internal project, which the noise should drop to virtually nothing. However, I can tell you that Mr. Friedman is still extremely concerned that our code does not have mechanisms by which we would not, that we would prohibit construction of a project over a certain duration.
It's interesting because I don't remember when, but I was on council when we made the changes that we have now, which is that you can only get extensions for so long and then you have to reapply again. So this will be the second time this has come up. I mean, it used to be you could just sort of extend it indefinitely.
I will tell you, I think, he and I have talked about this, and I think, I think he is, he absolutely, he is a longtime resident. He's really a joy to talk to. I don't think he knows what the solution is. He doesn't have specific language. He doesn't know what the mechanism is. He just is hoping we can think of something. You know, I've told him it's really going to be a challenge. If there's a project halfway finished, we can't deny the permit. That's, that's not good for anybody, right? It might temporarily stop the noise emanating, but it's not good for anyone to have a half-finished. That's just not practical. And he gets it, you know, I'm not, he's, I think what he's really hoping is there's a, another solution that maybe we just all don't know about that could be utilized in the code to prevent this.
And that, the reason I say it's interesting is because that was the nature of the whole discussion at the time, too, right? And I think that that's why we did say, well, okay, you have to start over and pay again. And I remember specifically someone saying, well, that's not going to stop some people.
Well, and furthermore, I mean, is there an opportunity to maybe enhance that slightly? Doubling the fees, tripling the fees for a reapplication? That's entirely possible. In this particular instance, if you go to 19 Sunset Drive and look at the lot and look at the, would that have stopped this particular out-of-country property owner from doing the plans that would be a drop in the bucket of what they wanted to do would in no way stop them? And Mr. Freeman completely understands that. He really is, he's great. He might reach out to you after I send this to you guys. And if anybody does have any ideas, we would love to hear it, but I don't know what we-
Well, if I don't know what Counselor Brown said, I was on council, too. And we've plowed this field before, and it was on Random Road, a very large property there that took forever. And Jerry Williver is the owner across the street who was attending.
Yes.
We've, I'm sure if we go back and find these things, we can find detailed discussions of council about options and memos from staff about what our options were and what you can do. But you're, you're kind of stuck because you can, you can increase the fees, but for homes that they're building, it's just a cost of doing business.
We looked at, you know, the equipment itself that creates the highest amount of noise. Those are all OSHA standards that are in place. We don't get to dictate the volume level, the decibel level. We don't get to dictate the frequency. We, we've tried to look at this from a lot of different angles. That is a non-issue, that's a non-starter. We can't do anything on that front. So anyway, I just want you to have a heads up so that you weren't caught off guard by this.
Thanks.
Tomorrow. Quincy Farm, I do want to just give council a heads up. We have been meeting with the land preserve, I would say extremely productive meetings. We are on schedule for the study session for September the 6th within, it's on the agenda right now for annual plant adoption on the 20th of September. So it's very exciting, it's very good news, and I think it's been very productive. So I'll be excited for you guys to see it. The one last thing I had that I'm adding here, in regards to, Counselor Sheldon had questions regarding cell service and asking for us to look at some things. Council may recall that we were having, Counselor Wheel and the mayor and staff were having conversations with Zayo regarding adding some fiber along Bellevue University and parts of Quincy. We probably had four meetings, and they basically sent us an email rather abruptly, in my opinion, that said, yeah, we're going to have to cancel all subsequent meetings. We can't get any traction from the providers. So what we've been talking about is, as we approach the date, that council needs to start the public input process for ARPA funding. We've talked about that, right? Once the master plan gets far enough along that priorities become clear, we'll have some, we'll have a starting point for that conversation about ARPA funding. We can then go through a public process, and we have options, and council can decide how we want to get that public input. But very clearly, I've certainly heard from enough council members that funding, using ARPA funding to fund increased service for cell service should be one of the items on that list. In preparation for that, Jay has been talking with the leading consultants, probably, who really did a lot of work for Centennial and others on using grants to install fiber backbone, the middle mile. And we're going to have him come in and talk to you. They know all of this, the person specifically, and I always forget his name, I apologize. What is it?
Dave Zelnick.
Dave Zelnick. Yeah. So he, he is, he knows all about the latest with ARPA funding, how it can be used, what it can be used for, what it can't be used for, et cetera. So we, I think we have a date scheduled, do we not?
I guess.
Okay. So, but it's going to be, before we start the ARPA process, we want to tee that, that specific topic up for you to give you the latest and the greatest, and he will, he will provide you the best information on that front. So that will be coming this fall.
Is the, is the work we've been doing in the master plan consistent with an effort to move forward the, some kind of cell coverage improvements? I know it's been asked, do we need to ask it any differently or more succinctly or-
Well, I, what I would, what I would offer to you, and this is a little bit off the top of my head, so I think this is correct, though, at some level of comfort. Some of the questions we've asked the residents, the survey questions, we ask, you know, do you, is cell service an issue? And they first, and they respond, yes, we want better cell service. As we then tease that out further, what are you willing to do to get increased cell service? And the leading result from that was, yeah, we want, we want that, to do that as funds become available, but not necessarily, is that right? I'm trying, is Earl here?
Yes, he is.
But, but there was not a huge appetite for large public subsidies of that process.
Right. So would it be a public process then, after the master planning was done, in order to take that next step? If we wanted to use ARPA money, would that still then require a, maybe, it would likely require a public process in the form of open houses and getting feedback and whatnot, but certainly not a requirement to take it out to a citywide-
No, 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 yes.
Go use ARPA funds for that purpose.
You're right. Let me clarify that. My, what I've talked about with some individual council members, we haven't had a group discussion necessarily, is that, that our total allocation of ARPA funds, there's options available. And we need to, you will eventually have to decide how we want to spend that money. Now, we fall under a threshold of a certain city size limit of how we can use those money, and it gives us a little bit more flexibility, it gives us a lot more flexibility of how to use those funds. Nonetheless, it's an extremely visible topic that a lot of our residents already know about. And so my recommendation to the council is that we go through an input process where there's an opportunity for our residents to voice their preference. There'll have to be a little bit of education before we do that, just so people understand what this, these dollars are and what it could be used for. But my, my absolute best recommendation is that we don't start that process until after we've had an opportunity for the master plan to give us an unbelievable starting point, because we would have gone through a very public process to get not just a list of projects, but it prioritizes them. So that would be my recommendation. What I'm suggesting to you on one of those options, which would be increased cell service, is that we take an extra step with that one to tee it up for you by bringing in HR Green, the consulting firm, to give more background and context to you about the latest with what local jurisdictions can do and what's the most effective steps that local jurisdictions can take to increase cell service.
Great.
And I, my two cents is, we have to get the, you know, we have the ARPA money there. It's a lot of flexibility, but we should get it spent, we need to make sure we can sign up projects that we've spent it, so we can get it, you know, out. And we, there is, sometime, there's just sometime, you can't take a project five or 10 years out, that's not going to work. It's got to be a more immediate project. And we have, and obviously, the Highline Canal is competing interest, it's covered by ARPA, but cell service as well. That's, I think Chris is exactly right, we need to figure out what the master plan, what they're saying, but I think we just make sure that we spend that money-
Agreed.
-that we were given, so, and on the appropriate, in the appropriate places. I haven't, do you have any update on the Highline? I haven't heard any meetings about the Highline combination. Have you been?
As far as-
Just meetings about the technical committee? Have you been a part of those recently?
Yeah, I've been meeting with the technical committee. And then Emily's with the recreation committee, more of the signage and all of those things. Yeah, we continue to move forward. The big thing is, is Denver Water pushing a timeline and kind of not helping anybody with anything until you sign an agreement, because we, we had met with Denver Water a few months back to try to extend our irrigation project, and we're pretty much told that we really don't want to talk to you until you want to take over the maintenance. So that's the big thing right now, is getting those maintenance contracts set up. We're still continuing to work on our stormwater study. We'll meet with ICON again this week, and then we will take a draft to PTRC and P&amp;Z, and then bring that draft with their comments to council and then-
September 20th.
And, yeah, and then at a later date, we'll bring you the final study to approve.
We have the budget process obviously coming up, and these can be rolled into that. But the Highline Canal and those contracts, I mean, I've mentioned to you that I've had contacts from Denver Water indicating that they're willing to be very, you know, talk with us and really understanding. We aren't the problem that's holding up.
Yeah, no, it's-
We aren't the problem.
Yeah, no.
We're fine. We can, we can sit down with them, and we can, we can, we can get over kind of hurdles of our, you know, so our residents don't spend money they don't need to be spending and get on.
And-
Agreed.
And I think we're a little bit ahead of all the other municipalities and because we're doing this stormwater study-
I think they're waiting for, they're waiting for you.
They're waiting.
I don't know if you shared, you haven't shared ICONs with everybody else, have we?
Yeah.
We have not. We aren't going to do that until council gets to see it first. Just as a reminder, the purpose of the ICON study that we're performing is so that council has a better idea about what our costs are going to need to be to have a, and to have a better idea about what improvements we need to make, so that our residents, especially downstream residents, are protected in the event of events, large events. Furthermore, also to give council an idea about maintenance costs, so that when we do sign over our maintenance obligation responsibilities to us, you are going in eyes wide open. We know what our capital obligations are going to be, when they're going to be, and what our annual maintenance costs are going to be. I will tell you, Denver Water has said to the rest of the conservancy membership, they would, they hope that anybody who wants to call us should, because they think this is the best way to move forward. There are other members who are going to be hesitant on taking over maintenance responsibilities. That's just the reality.
And stormwater maintenance is one of the couple potential topics that we can merge our efforts with Greenwood Village or a neighboring jurisdiction, is that right?
Maintenance, yes.
Maintenance, not in construction. Mostly maintenance of trees, vegetation, trash, the trail, stormwater, the maintenance after we build it, yeah, cleaning out the channel, those type of things, but not the actual-
The capital, capital costs are ours.
And I will remind everybody, if you don't already have this on your calendar, September 16th is the dine for the Highline Canal.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, that's good.
Sign up.
Yep.
It's going to be fun, out under the stars.
Well, so, so that, that discussion that we have on September 20th will be perfect timing, because it'll be fresh on everyone's mind. So, so those are all the updates I had. I know it was a long one tonight, I apologize, but.
City clerk? City attorney?
I'll just echo Mr. Farman's compliments to the city clerk. She's been way on it a lot, so.
All right.
Well, we should, if we're doing that, we need to recognize some tireless efforts by our city attorney, esteemed city attorney. This has been no small feat. We do not, Cherry Hills Village does not have a lot of history with citizen initiatives, does not have very much experience at all with council-referred items, some, but not a lot. And we have been, she has been dealing, she's been very nimble, trying to keep things moving along, trying to be extremely responsive while at the same time looking out for the interests of the city. So hats off.
Good job.
Good job. All right. All right. Any objections? Don't hear any. We're adjourned.